And I'll be keeping minutes as well.
Okay. Well, if we're not, not going through the WACA streaming, I'm less upset about not my virtual background not working. We'll have to remember not to wear this shirt.
Just take your shirt off.
Yeah. It's not that warm in here.
Hand it up a little bit toward, will you just catch the neck up?
Well, actually, the, the secret is that I've gotten a new under desk exercise bicycle. So I can be pedaling and, and at the same time, but then I do get kind of hot.
Well, it does start weakening.
I actually find it helps me concentrate on the meetings I'm in, so I'm rather liking it.
Are we, you guys are just using the recording function on Zoom, right?
Uh, yes, Joe.
Cool.
Yeah, and I'm gonna take some note, I'll take notes as well.
Hi, Steve.
Greetings, everybody.
Hi, Steve.
We're just waiting for Phil to show up, so we have a full board.
Emma. Yes. So just in terms of materials, the two, the two materials on the town website, 423 and 429 are the two current materials for this evening's meeting, correct?
Correct.
One of them's building one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what was that?
Uh, one of them's the site plan and one of them is building one.
Right, okay, got it, thank you.
Building three is the same, so it's an old one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. No, whichever is the most recent for building three.
Preston, Phil's on board, uh, and so you can, uh, start the meeting.
All right, um, that being said, it is now, uh, 7:13 and I'm calling the Ashland Planning Board, uh, meeting to order. Uh, this meeting is being, uh, recorded, uh, by the planning director, uh, through the Zoom interface. Uh, we are not being, uh, recorded and broadcast on WACA, uh, though actually, wait a second, WACA is now joining. If they are going to be broadcasting us, then I will, uh, start over again in a minute. Maybe they were thinking 7:15?
Maybe that could have been the issue.
Emma, could you, could you clarify on which is the, I see, the last plans I see distinctly labeled building three are dated 219. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's where I am.
So is, uh, is somebody from WACA actually there that can speak?
Yeah, you all set?
Yeah, uh, are you gonna, uh, we didn't realize you were gonna be joining us, so, um, you're ready to, uh, stream or record or whatever you're gonna do?
Yeah.
I think. Cable whacka.
Yes.
Whacka.
So the, uh, whoever's on WACA, or would you, uh, like, count me down and then we'll start when you're ready?
While we're waiting, I can confirm that 219 is correct for the building three plans.
Okay, thank you.
I can count Dylan if he wants to play a song. Two, three, four, two, three, let's do it.
What kind of a count was that?
Pump rock.
Four, three, two, okay.
I'm not hearing anything from the WACA, so I don't know what they're doing. I'm waiting for the cable TV people, cause.
Usually there's two people who.
Yeah.
And I'm only seeing ones, that might be why we're not hearing from them.
Nobody's in the waiting room.
I could probably reach out to, on Facebook, I don't know them personally, but I, I could reach out to Miles or, um, Paul, if, if you know who it's supposed to be.
That's gonna drag it out. We're recording it, let's just go.
All right, well, let's get started, and if they want to join us, they can. Uh, this is, uh, the Ashland Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, May 19th. I'm now calling it to order at, uh, 7:17. Uh, we are being, uh, recorded by the planning director, uh, for the purpose of ensuring accuracy of minutes. Uh, we may also be recorded by WACA TV and may or may not be streamed and broadcast, uh, by them. Uh, we have only one item on our agenda for tonight, and that is 81 West Union Street. Uh, this was supposed to be on last Thursday's meeting, uh, but we had a mix-up in the posting of the agenda. Uh, what, uh, this, uh, project is, is it's next to the new storage building. Uh, they have a second phase of the project. Uh, they had been, uh, talking about three buildings. Uh, it was looking like they would probably not get the approval from the planning board for that project. And they've now come back where they're keeping, uh, what was building three of that project as is, which is the building, uh, farthest in the back. Uh, and they are taking some aspects of what was building one and building two and, uh, proposing a new building, uh, where that building is farther back on the property. Uh, and with that said, um, I, I will turn it over to the applicant. I think I've, i- if I've misstated anything, uh, let me know and, um, let us know where we stand.
Okay, well, thank you for, uh, having this meeting. Um, last time we had a discussion of the project was two meetings ago, and we presented, uh, more of a schematic, uh, idea and schematic elevation of what the project would be, uh, given, uh, the planning board comments from the meeting before that in regards to, uh, the size of the project and, more importantly, the proximity of the project to the, immediate, uh, butters and the residential properties in front of what had been building two. So, uh, the plans that you now have in front of you, and I don't know if Peter, you can pull up the first page of the site plan?
Uh, Peter, I've made actually you and Bart, uh, co-hosts, uh, if you want to share your computer, and I could do it as well.
See, if I can figure out how to do that.
It's in the center, the center icon at the bottom. So if you just drag your mouse down towards the center of the screen, it should appear.
Ah, you're sharing something.
I can share, I can share the screen right here.
Yeah, hang on one second.
I think I have it up, Peter.
You got it?
Preston, can you confirm, Mike, can you see my?
We're looking, we're seeing your file.
You can see a list of files, but I can't see the actual.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sometimes, some computers you have to reshare because it only shows whatever application you had open.
Yeah, cause I'm clicking on it, doesn't open.
If it's showing as open on your screen, Peter, you, you're gonna have to stop your screen share and restart, I think, to get that to.
Peter, do you just wanna share your screen?
I'm trying.
I, I've stopped my screen share.
Here it comes, Peter, seen it?
All right, I see your email.
No, it's building three. All right.
I am not seeing building three.
No, I'm looking at the overall site plan, can you see that?
No, we're looking at your email.
No.
Yeah, Zoom sometimes will grab the window that you have up.
Yeah.
And continue to share that window even if you see something different on your screen, I've seen this problem before. So you may have to cancel your screen share and start your screen share again once you have up on your screen what you want to show us.
All right.
Good news is, you just got an email that you inherited $200 million.
In Nigeria, I expect.
Just enter your bank account information and send him some money to transfer it.
That's a shirt.
Yes.
There it is.
There it is. So this depicts, if I can blow it up. Too big. Can you skip on this and see what, uh? Hold on, a little water, water rejection on a glass of water.
You hit, um, if you hit that dark arrow in the center of the box to the right, it'll hide that, all that list of stuff. See the little, the black, the black triangle right in the center?
You can make it full screen.
Right, I can't draw on your screen, but anyway. Yeah, right there, keep going down.
Keep going down?
See that black triangle right in the center, the, the center of the bar?
No.
We want to get rid of where it says export PDF, create PDF, edit PDF, that's just taking up a huge amount of space on the screen.
So right next to the scroll bar on the side of the plan in the middle of the page.
See, it says combine files, combine files, the purple icon.
Right next to that.
Yeah, over to the, a little to the left, no. A little tiny, no, no, no.
No.
Peter, I'll just share the screen.
Yeah, that might be easier.
Okay. Who's on first?
I never said I was technology, uh, sufficient.
No, that's not something we require.
So, as, as, if you can get that plan up, what the plan depicts.
How's that, everybody?
Yeah. So to address the comments from the viewpoint of the, the project itself, and again, the proximity, particularly buildings, what were buildings one and two, to, to the adjacent residential Mr. Ferris in Montaquila, um, we put the building, uh, as the board has suggested, to the back of the site. So that now the building is, is 85 feet from the Ferris house in about 141 feet to the Montaquila house. The plan also depicts, and the anticipation is to keep with the same, um, fencing, um, in landscaping behind Ferris and Montaquila, half of that is already in. And as a result of shifting the building to the back, we created some parking area behind those two houses. We also have a lot more green area behind those houses. So, um, I think we, it was the best we could do in the nature of trying to address the board's concern from the viewpoint of the project and then the proximity to the residential, so that, again, now the closest to any residential building from any building is, is 85 feet, and that's to the Ferris's house. So when you come into the site, there's an area of parking on the right, you continue on, the building is straight ahead of you. Uh, that is the mixed-use building, uh, with three residential units. All the residential units looking at that building at a right-hand side of the building. And we provided you with floor plans, uh, so there's one unit on each floor. That location in that building gives us some good opportunity to create some, uh, residential amenity space for those people. So the first floor unit has, uh, garages for, for two cars in the building. And then a patio area, a green space to the right. The second and third floor units, uh, have balconies out back, so all have the ability of some green space over there. And then balconies, which would be overlooking the, the main wetland area. So we created some amenity space for those three residential units. The floor plans we gave you, uh, now depict one of the comments I think we had when we talked about this originally. Was kind of concerned of what the architecture would look like, uh, in the space, uh, behind the, the front facade. So we have in fact created, uh, commercial or, uh, office space on each of the three floors in the front. So that there will be no fake, you know, windows or facades, there'll be actually occupied commercial space on each of the levels from the front of the building. We noticed with, when we finalized those floor plans, um, and Bart had finished up the site plan before that. And we haven't made the change to give to you now, but, um, it's roughly 200 square feet, uh, more, uh, than what's reflected on the plan, uh, for the retail or commercial space, so we have the, the right number of parking spaces, so that's one change we get, we need to make. And again, that's being made, cause what we have created is commercial area on each of the three floors, so there's no fake fronts to any of it. Uh, so that's one change we, we need to make to give to you, but we will have the required parking. The building three is essentially the same as it was, we could a little, create a little more green space, uh, I guess, towards the street line for that residential unit there, but otherwise, building three is essentially the same. If you recall, on the back end of that building, we had already made the modification in regards to, uh, eliminating some of the doorway so that we create the switchback stairs, so the stairs that had been shown a couple versions ago extending, you know, straight away from the prop, straight away from the building. Uh, that's no longer the case. So that's generally it, and the nature of development from the viewpoint of the architecture. Again, we're working with an architect, John, has done work on that, a layout, uh, all of the units within the, the new building and access to those, including elevators. And we incorporated, uh, a lot of design from what had been the, the original commercial building, uh, to the front facade of the new building. From the viewpoint of the drainage, uh, building coverage is, is down about 4,000 square feet. I got the note today in the nature of the consultant looking for the drainage report, and Bart and I emailed back and forth, which hopefully will have the full drainage report, uh, tomorrow. But it's kind of, it's a reduction of, of the impervious than what it had been. And given the original plan had essentially been signed off, we figured that, um, although it needs review, the drainage system as was originally designed will handle the new development, given the fact that the impervious coverage is, is less than it was before. John, did you want to talk about the facade? We'll have Jonathan Ward talk about the, the building facade, so Pete, if you can pull up the front elevation of the new building.
Good evening.
Evening.
There you go. So this is the, uh, just the cover page. What we were trying to accomplish with this building was, uh, we put emphasis on making it look more residential. And so we're trying to make it kind of look like, uh, townhomes where you see the, the gambrels in the front separating. And then the far right is the, uh, three-story.
I can't.
I can learn to understand you much better if I can get familiar with the way you talk. I need your.
I don't know.
Hang on.
I don't see the Zoom meeting, but I'm assuming you guys can, uh, hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we have an, a ADA compliant, uh, on the first floor. And then we have a staircase that goes to, uh, up to the, uh, second and third floor. And then on the, on the, uh, as we go through the plan. So why don't we go to the next page? If you could. All right, so this is, what this page is doing is basically breaking the building down into its three components. Where the top left corner, you see the commercial, uh, front of the building, you have, uh, three stories there. We're utilizing the gambrels and the dormers. And then the center section is where there is like an entry. So it's someone parking in the, in the front that is working in the back, that like, and everyone can have access to the entire building through, that entryway, and then you'll see later in the floor plan, there's an elevator and staircases. And everyone has, uh, two, um, two means of egress. And there's also, as you'll see on the, there's bathrooms on each level. Uh, in the top right, that show in the rear of the general service areas where we have, you can have up to five, uh, separate, um, units back there. And then this page also breaks down, uh, the sizes. And then bottom left is the residential showing, uh, the right elevation of the, uh, the residential units. The, um, first floor, it has the bump out there where that's a master bed, two, actually two bedrooms. Meeting the requirements of ADA. And then you'll see that the second and third floor, they have their own decks that has a, another staircase that leads to grade, so that's their second means of egress. And then the first means of egress would be a staircase, uh, toward that's inside the parking area. And that describes what each of the, the units have in their sizes. If you could go to the next page. So this is the, oh, yeah, the foundation is the foundation, so you can see on this floor plan, we, we've designed it so you have a, uh, you have two means of egress that meet, um, the requirements as far as distances from the furthest door. With the sprinkler systems, we have plenty of, uh, plenty of that. Where no one has too far to travel. And, and so you can see on the first, second and third floor, uh, we could, we have those units uh, on the front drawn as one, but they could be broken up into two, so we're just showing how versatile this, this new layout is. And then toward the rear, you'll see where it says, you know, it's on all three levels, it's one big open area. And you have a, a mezzanine, uh, for the general services, one, two, four and five. And then you can see the floor plan layouts, uh, well, you're on the first floor plan right now, you can see the, the, that's the sec, is that the second? Yes, that's the second floor. And then if you go to the third floor, you can see that each unit had, there are three bedrooms on the second and third floor, and you can see they have the two means of egress. You, and we've really added a lot of green space, uh, and outdoor space for these units. And they, and the reason we put them where they are is so that they can enjoy, uh, the wetlands and the woods. And, uh, they have, uh, plenty of privacy. You wanna go up to some of the, uh, 3D images? Well, that's the, uh, orthographic. You can see that, um, orthographically, we have a hip roof, so we have, uh, it's not a flat roof up there. And you can see the overall heights of the building on one of these, I show what the, the maximum height of the hips are. And the intent is to hide all of the, uh, mechanicals and the condensers up on the roof on the back so that they can't be seen. And when you look at it in 3D, you'll notice you can't even really see the hip roofs from the ground. Uh, but I think the overall, the highest point of the roof is 37 feet, if we go to the next, page, there's. page, there's, I think. And so that's the on one of these, I have the what the height of the roof is. Sorry, I'm putting my face so close. There it is. So you can see the different heights of the elements of the building. And you'll see in this image, this is the perfect one, you can see there's a roof hatch. We actually have built it the staircase that goes all the way to the third floor. We've actually have a separate hallway from that stairwell that leads to that roof hatch. And the plan is to put all of the mechanicals on the downside of that and have a like a platform with for them to all sit on and have a railing system around them. We just don't show that, but that's our intent. But I wanted to show like if you click forward. Now you're looking at them on the, you know, 3D like you're standing on the ground. And you can see that you're not going to be able to see any of the mechanicals from the left or the front or the right. You'd have to be out in the the woods to actually see any mechanicals that would be on the back. If you just go forward. That's showing the residential. You can see there's the privacy fence. You have plenty of green area. And we put the condensers for these three units up underneath the staircase that leads down to grade from the decks and behind there. I think you might be able to see them. But so this, yeah, right underneath the stairs where you're pointing up circling. So keep moving forward. And I think we're almost basically done ready for. And that's just showing another, you'll see that the porch wraps around. So everyone is protected. All the entryways are protected. Keep moving. That's just showing another image. Keep moving. That's just showing the image of the porch and of the columns and like a Wayne Scott detail. We can get into that once you start asking questions. Just trying to show better. And this is an aerial view showing. Yep, that's the roof hatch. Yep.
The other point from the viewpoint of this location of this building, the grade is actually three feet lower than the grade of what had been the other building. So again, that'll be a reduction in the height of that that building, given it's pushing to the back and 85 feet from the closest residence. So that's kind of the overview and we can answer any questions that you've got.
I have one. I can jump in there, Preston. Can't hear you. Okay, I have a couple, actually. First of all, is that is are these parking spaces that 20 by 10 by 20?
Yeah, these are parking, these part, all the parking spaces meet your requirement. So there's no waiver needed from any of that. And we have two buildings and two loading areas. No relief that we were talking about last time we need for this.
Okay, I just wondered because if they if they were, we had talked about if you made them smaller, maybe there's a little bit more green space, which is fine. The other thing is I like the fact that on building two, you put the residents on one end, which I think would be better on the other building also and eliminate those stairs in the back and all that. It kind of separates the people aren't over the construction. That's just a point of.
And the location of these three, as you can see, this is the view right out to the wetlands and the other buildings, you know, a couple hundred feet away. So, you know, these locations would be about the best you can get on the site.
Okay, my main one was the parking because we had talked about it. There was, you know, if you could squeeze it down a little bit, you could get more green space, but.
Yeah, it the number, there's very few areas you could do it. So there's very little savings that you would make.
And I just thought I still don't understand how on building three, the handy part handicap that's right on the lot line, those parallel parking, this seems like it'd be a nightmare to get in and out of there. But there's four spots that are parallel parking up against that fence.
Yeah, those would be nice, easy parking spaces for those residents. Those are going to be designated to the residential units.
Well, if you're if you're handicapped, parking in the handicap, I guess you'd pull up back in, straighten it out. Then when you pull out, you'd have to back out, pull up, back out, right?
You're next, you're talking next to building three?
Yes.
Yeah, there was some promise to take the space out, create some more green space there. We can move that handicap space to the to make it the the farthest one. You know, rather than the last one, make it the first one rather than the last one.
Okay, yeah, just that whole parallel part. And it seems like you have to back out.
Yep. Yeah, we could just reverse those.
Yeah. But even if.
Regulations are for parallel parking handicap spots. That's unusual, obviously. So that if there are special considerations, usually.
I think, Brian, I think that's an extra handicap space anyways, right? Because we've only got 74 spaces. What are we going to need four, right?
Right, but we wanted to have one closer to that resident residential unit.
Just in case.
As long as it fits with all the ADA regulations on such things for parallel parking, then.
Well, I'm just thinking the all four of those spots are kind of a nightmare. I mean, that's why another reason, I don't know if it's possible if you if we went with the smaller, because we all agreed at one point that we would be okay with the smaller parking spots. If there's any way, if you squeeze them out, you could eliminate those and maybe make another one or two that pull straight in in the top corner and just make it green space back there.
And the other thing I would say about that one parallel parking handicap spot back by building three is if you don't actually have to have it, but it was intended in case somebody in the apartment there needed it, you could just designate that spot as reserved for the apartment. And then they get to park there whether it's handicapped or not.
Yeah, what we'll do on this plan is is we'll put some signage on designated the the parking spaces for the residential.
But you see where I'm talking right, right at the corner of the building where it says 33 feet? And that there's a line across there.
Yeah.
If you just put a curb right there and put two spots in front of that, one of them was handicapped, they could pull right in and just eliminate those two and figure, you know, if you can squeeze them in somewhere else. I'm just. Oh, we also need fire access on that side of the building. So that's why we kept that open. That needs to be there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before we get too far into the technical details, I think we have a big picture question that I think is the fundamental question that the applicant really needs to know. Because when we were looking at the previous version with three buildings, it became clear towards the end that they weren't going to get enough votes on the special permit to approve the plan. And I think what the applicant really needs is is this plan something that we think we can work with and grant the special permit? Or is this a fundamentally unsound plan? And the applicant shouldn't waste any more time moving in this direction. So if if we can get that answer, then we can work to make it is, and if the answer is yes, they can get the special permit, then then we can work with them to get it to the point where it can actually be approved. And if the answer is no, then, you know, they can go do something else. And the sooner we can get that answer, the better. And then then we can focus on the the little details of, you know, can we get rid of this parking space? Can we, you know, that kind of thing.
My 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 opinion is that it's workable because this is just a really weird lot and with the wetlands and all that, really strange. But this is definitely something that I think can I could go along with. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good good Preston, good move to kind of talk about the big picture first. And I think too that that this building, like going from the two buildings to one building, I keep looking to the side because I actually have it open on another screen where I can see everything better. So it might look weird seeing the side of my face. But it but this building does alleviate in a fairly generous way, the the concerns we had about the site plan. So I'm really thrilled to see that, that this offers, I mean, a lot more kindness to those residences, which, yes, they're in a a commercial down now or a mixed a mixed zone. But our goal today is to be kind to them. And the other building, you know, has hasn't changed as much, but they're basically, and correct me if I'm wrong, the second part of that property is basically a commercial property already. I believe, I mean, there's a house on it. But it seems to be a commercial property and back.
Yeah, in fact, the original site plan, the distance of 105 feet, that's to the that go commercial garage, not to the house. The house is at least another 100 feet beyond that.
Um, right, I'm I'm really talking about the, you know, when I'm when I'm talking about the the back building, the building.
From the back corner of the original site plan to the barn property, when we went out on that sidewalk, you saw that that area was all cleaned out and that that back building is a barn. So again, looking at the first site plan from the very front corner of building three to that, I guess, easterly side or northerly side of of the property. You're right, that's to that commercial garage, not to the house.
Right. And I mean, the only dimension that's relative, that's that's kind of meaningful to me there is the 11 feet. You know, so where is your building relative to the property line, you know? And then the other for building one, you you show the corner, I believe, at 51 feet, you know, which is great. Because, you know, both, like I said, those are residential properties. I believe the other one here is the residential part of it is much closer to the street and the rest is kind of a more being used as a more commercial property. So I think that it does address some of those concerns that that we had in in that regard. And and I'm happy to see that. I'm happy to see the extra green space. It just shows a lot more consideration for that, for the neighborhood and and acknowledging that it that it is a tricky site in there. I mean, I think the building itself, talking about the new one, building, building one. Now, I mean, obviously you're getting something here today and this isn't at 100%. So there's definitely things in that that I think that I see a good effort, you know, in, but obviously are in still in a, you know, in a in a design phase where things are going to be tweaked. But but maybe we can get in, again, wait to get into that kind of detail so other people can can weigh in on the the general general configuration here before we go forward.
I think, yeah, what you're saying is the footprint, we're we're looking kind of at the footprint first. So we can see if that that can work.
So I I would, I would just, I would kind of echo what's been said before from the two preceding board members. Like, I do think, I think this is a huge step towards trying to make this plug into what's around it a little bit better and to being to being more concerned. And I think the design, the thoughtfulness of design and stuff shines that, you know, there's, you know, even as in this draft, kind of early draft stage, it's, you know, it shows the effort. And so, yeah, I generally, I think this this is a is a workable thing. I guess the the only top level thing that I you know, that I'd like to understand is just, you know, the height of this building one relative to that storage facility. So that to the peak of the roof per the page in this presentation, it was 44 feet. And the pages aren't numbered, so I I can't refer to a page number, but the there there. Who's Peter, you presenting?
Yes, I can.
Can you flip to that? It's the one with the the height dimensions? Like, I think I'm trying to stay high level. I think overall, what I said, right? I think this moves in the right direction. I just want to understand.
Yeah, my my recollection of the the storage building is whether it's 33 or 35, I think somewhere in that range. And again, I think this is a little bit lower because of the grade, not much.
I mean, I mean, to the peak of the roof, it's 40, 44 feet is what that says.
Right.
And then to the to the tip of the gambrel, it's 37 feet. So we're actually, just for context, we're actually talking about a structure here that's taller than the storage building. But I hear you. Yes, you're saying the grade is three feet lower. So 44 less than three, you're saying it's still at 41 feet versus the estimate for the storage building is 35 feet.
I believe that's the size of the storage. And again, the storage theoretically could have gone up six stories.
Yeah, I mean, understood, understood, Peter, but I I mean, I don't, you know, I I think, you know, understood it could have gone six stories, but I think already it's it's a substantial shift in that whole the feel of that area, right?
The storage is three stories. This is three stories. The difference is, to some extent, the the storage is flat roof. So now you've got, you know, a little bit of a pitch to add that height. But again, we've used the dormers to shrink the elevation as the board had wanted.
I think it's.
Ambro, whatever the architectural style is, I'm not an architect.
I think it's important not to get argumentative about these kind of points right now. If our if our analysis is that the building seems tall relative to what's there, then it seems tall, period. That's that's what the board thinks. And it would be the job to to bring that height down. Now, that was, I mean, this is one of the things I was going to point out that I'm wondering why that upper gable necessarily is needed. If you can't see it from any perspective, then why isn't this thing just a gambrel roof with a flat roof beyond on which to put the equipment? And really, your end height is the 37.3, which may even be able to come down a little lower from that. So I'm not sure what that shallow, that very shallow hip back there does versus just having a flat roof, you know, up there.
Like, I mean, just just big picture, like, when I foot, when I think about this building, right? I can't, I I'm not picturing this building one being taller than the storage building, right? In my view, the storage building is the tallest thing that's going to be in this property. I understand it's a different phase, but in this parcel, you've got the storage building. This is a, you know, commercial bay residential and some and some, you know, office space, right? I I'm just not picturing this use in this building taller than that storage building. It seems in my mind, in my mind, in my mind's eye, it's it's a building that's that's not taller. And and so, and it is, and it will, and again, it is visible from the street and this this will present on 135. It is substantially improved from the neighbors. I 100% agree. I appreciate the, you know, the effort to reposition this and get it away. But it's, I don't know, that's kind of my my high level, the one high level thing that jumps off at me. I have some other stuff, but I'll leave it for now.
And that's that's good to know for them to know because that could be an issue later, the height.
Well, I'd like to make a few points about that.
Okay.
So you can see the start, the top of the mansard is at 37 feet. And orthographically, you can see that the the ridge is at 43.9 approximately. Again, we're three feet down. So really, in in relationship to the storage building, we're at like 32 and a half feet. So we're like, so we're.
Sorry, how are you? How are you getting that map? I'm sorry, the ridge is 44. You're saying it's a three feet grade differential.
Right.
So how are you getting this 32?
I'm I'm concentrating on the. I'm, I'm concentrating on the top of the mansard at thirty-seven-three.
And that's, that's the front of the building? That's what you see from the street?
Because.
So that building is, is over a hundred and twenty feet from the street?
And if you, this is orthographically, so it's not showing you as you really are going to see the building. You are not going to see that roof. If you go to the pages that show in three D as a person was standing in perspective, looking up, it will appear as a flat roof. You're not even going to see that roof unless you're especially since the road is the road below this elevation bill. Yeah. So we're, you're, this perspective that you're looking at it, you are not going to see that roof. Now, to answer the question about why isn't it a flat roof? Well, two reasons, we, but originally the original building wanted a flat roof, but we really weren't supposed to do a flat roof. And as we looked at this, we thought that this would be smarter dealing with snow and water and dealing with the, that issue of a building and dealing with if we had it, originally we had it as a mansard with, with the roof as a flat roof. But we were noticing that we could have a potential of trapping snow and ice. And how do we deal with that? So we're like, well, you're not going to really see this roof from the ground. So we put the slopes and we did the hips so that we're shedding the water in all directions so that we eliminate potential problems with water and, and ice.
It makes sense, yes.
Yeah, well, no, it doesn't because, you know, I think, I understand the question about it being, hey, we thought the regulations wouldn't allow us to have a flat roof. And we'll have to look at that. I'm not really sure how it's written as far as appearance versus actuality. But obviously, you know, the, the, the typical way for a commercial building, this kind of commercial building to go is a flat roof, like that's, that's normal, you know? There's not all these problems with drainage and snow and stuff because that technology is old school. It's used every day in commercial buildings. So really, we're trying to find the solution that's correct for this property. And if height is part of that, however it's perceived, then height is part of that. So that's a discussion that has to remain open as to the type of roof on this thing and, and bringing the height down. I mean, we have a three-story building that's going to be going up on Pond Street and that's under thirty-five feet, I believe. So, um, so we know it can be done.
Well, you could easily put a flat roof on it right where it sits right now. I mean.
Well, the, these are the types of things, you decide the kinds of considerations and trade-offs. You know, I understand and appreciate that if you, if you thought, hey, we can't do a flat roof, then let's look at another option. So, but.
Let's look at a couple of things and we'll get back to for the next one. We'll even get back to the design group, then you, we can hear from them as well.
Yeah, we, and, and look at the, we should look at the, the regulations as well. If this is something the planning board, if there's a you know, a compromise situation to make the roof an attractive kind of mansard, but it's hiding something else beyond, then, then that's something we should, we should look at. It's, you know, maybe something new, new to consider for us. So, and, and that's okay to, to bring up those type of questions. You know, I'm finding the mansard to be extremely steep. And then these are the kind of tweaks that I think it's the next round. The dormers are kind of hanging out over the edge of the eve space, which is a little strange. I'm not sure, you know, so, so those, some of the things that I can see that are, you know, that, that mansard might need a, a better pitch and a straw, a smaller eve to get those dormers to work properly. But, but again, I know this is still in a design phase. So those are things that we should remain open and you guys should remain open to the kind of comments you're, you're getting because I think overall, we're much happier with what we're seeing, but it's nowhere near a hundred percent. So.
Phil, do you have any high level comments that haven't been said already?
Not much that hasn't been said already. I mean, I agree that, I mean, I, every time we come here that there's a, you know, I think particularly in the last couple of meetings that there's been substantial changes and I mean, I even if we're not exactly there, like, I, I mean, I'm only speaking for myself, I, I definitely see a sincere effort right now, like that we're moving. And that, you know, the dialogue is, there's, it's not just lip service that like, you know, this is substantially different than, you know, where we started at. So I probably don't have the same amount of concern, you know, with the roof type things, but I, I mean, I'm not an expert on like the drainage and those type of things, but I, I would say that, you know, I'm in, moving in the camp of, you know, I'm pretty happy of where we're, we're at right now. But I'm not that it's perfect. Again, like Trish would say, but I, I, I'm definitely considering where I thought we were a little while ago. Uh, I, I'm glad that where we are right now. That's what I would say.
Okay, thank you. And I would echo pretty much what the, the rest of the board has said. I really like that the industrial side of this with the contractor bays is around the back and not visible from one thirty-five. I, I think that's a, a very good design decision. If we can do a little something to bring down the height of the building, that would be good. The, the biggest concern is what, how this visually looks from one thirty-five. If you could put into your software, the, the storage building as well, so you could show, show the, you know, put that in the right place and then get, run some perspective renderings. I don't know how hard that is, but if you could do something like that from one thirty-five that shows the storage bill, the existing storage building and this, it would give a lot better perspective of what we'd really expect.
And we'll work, we'll watch if we can do a perspective from the street of both buildings.
Yeah. I, I'm also thinking, you know, and this is starting to get in, back into the, the, the detail, the smaller level details. If you could lose the, that little parking lot, it's what, you know, eight or nine spaces right in front of one thirty-five? Even if it means asking us for an extra permit, because I believe by special permit, we can reduce parking requirements. So if you're putting that parking there, not because you truly believe you need it, but because our regulations say you have to have that number of parking spaces, then what I would, then, then what I would suggest is that you put on the plans that these spaces are to be constructed later in the event that you determine that you actually need them for the commercial use. That way you're, you're always free to come back and put them in later. If, if, if you're having parking shortages, but at, at least initially, we could get some green space. That's, that's a direction I would like to look at.
Yeah, I think the only, we can do that. We, framing him is often termed as land back space. A situation of defining, you know, how it's determined that you put them in. So I'm not sure we can work on that.
And also if you do a, from the street view, you probably if, put the landscaping into, because I believe a landscaping is going to screen a lot of that off. Because really, when you drive through there, the only time is, the building is going to be pretty far back. And just when the like school buses are coming out, you have to stop. You're going to, to look right in there at it. I mean, it's, it's pretty far back. So you kind of just drive by it, but the landscaping will help. The trees in the front by the road and all that. So if you do a rendering, at least have one that shows it with the trees and everything in there.
Yep.
Because that, I think that makes it just, the distance and the trees and landscaping makes, helps with the height.
Yeah. And that's the other reason for that little triangular island as well. And that's all planted with trees as well to break that up.
Yeah, because there's not much you can do between the storage building and the first tree. That's always going to be open where the driveway is. But it, the more you can kind of screen it from the road.
The other major, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, so they're going to share the sign with the one that's in front of the storage, right?
Yeah, we, we've got to work on that. We're not getting great response from them, but we're working on, you know, redefining that.
Just though, because, you know, businesses will want to have some way to let people know that they're there. So, you know, you can't, you have to be able to see it a little bit, but.
Yes.
The other thing that's, will be significant is I want to see what design review committee has to say about the outside of this building.
Yeah, we meet with them Thursday.
They usually have good suggestions.
Yeah, I think it's also important to start looking at the relationship between one and building three. And not that building three has to become building one because they don't have the same functions. They don't have the same relationship to the site. But how do, how do those two buildings start to relate to each other? That one is not an outbuilding of the other? That there's some, you know, is the, the siding or a, a better eve detail. Um, and I know that building hasn't been touched as part of this. But in the next phase of things, how does building three now talk to building one? Like, how are these things a set? They're on the same site. They're done with the same parking, the same landscaping. They need to be in the same family.
Yeah, I mean, the details on that, we had thought were pretty consistent with what building two was as we saw that transition through the site. And now this building is carrying a lot of the same features and better features. So you know, again, I'm not the architect. We'll go through all that with design review, get their comments and then maybe report back to you the next time meeting. But the idea of, of the, the trim and all that stuff, it's kind of the same consistent approach. The, the windows that the design review wanted us for the buildings and the, the numbers of panels and all that stuff, we're keeping the same.
Yeah, I can understand, I can see that, like looking at the two drawings, but for instance, if you look at building one, you know, it has these overhangs, not that building three should have the same overhang. I'm not saying it shouldn't be a gambrel building. I'm saying that it has a little, the building, you know, building three is very flat. It basically has no roof detail, no eve detail, no rake detail. It's a shed. It's a commercial shed. And so we need to have these two buildings be, have a little bit better relationship to each other so that one isn't kind of the, you know, like, like I said, the, the back shed of the other building, that they, they need to go together a little bit more, that you, that you can be proud of the, both of these buildings in the property. Not what, not, hey, we're just going to look at building one and we're going to kind of ignore building three back there. So I don't think that takes much, but it does take more than.
Yeah, we'll make sure that's consistent.
Paint them the same color.
All right. I, I think that may be about as far as we're going to get on this tonight. But before, before we say that, is there anything else from the board or the applicant? I'm also going to ask for public comment on this?
No, I just, I just think the parking, like you said, if we can get more green space and if that means making the spots, you know, whatever, the eighteen by whatever, that would be good. I think the whole general layout, this is something that I could approve as long as like all these little details, like we're not getting into the details now. But there are a few, few other things I'd like to see that are cosmetic and, and possibly, but.
So, so I just would reiterate, if possible, you know, for, for the next convo, you know, I would like to see, as Preston asked, kind of building, building, the building one A relative to the storage space with some of those kind of perspective views. You've given us some things like that in the past. I think that'd be useful. I would like to understand, you know, high level, how much mechanical is going on the back and that platform on the back top side of the roof? Be curious to see some of that additional detail. And, and I, and I guess I just echo Trish's comments, which is like making one A and three relate to each other so that it's, you know, it's, it's, it's one family. I think that's, you know, I would echo that. And that's it for me.
I, I think for me, it's, it is, I, I do want to reiterate that, that, that this is great progress, you know, for, for this stage. I think we were just, you know, on, on the former schemes, you could just look ahead and see that it was just going nowhere. It just wasn't, it just wasn't moving. This is a big leap. And it's not, it's still in the design stage. It's still being tweaked. That's a normal thing, but I think it's in the right direction and I'm hopeful. Like, I'm hopeful about this proposal. So that's a much better place than, than we were, you know, before. So I, you should take that as encouragement.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Uh, Mark? Mark, you seem to be muted. I've unmuted your phone. Is that what you need?
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. First of all, this is about the best communication back and forth that has been since, um, almost a half a year of this. And, um, I, I'm, I'm liking the idea that the, that the board sees a better showing of what there is. And I got a couple of questions. One is, is about the roof that I'm looking at. And, um, does that, yeah, or is that pitch middle, the, the middle point? Can't that be a little flatter? So it'd be less height? That's one, that's one question. I'm going to be finishing, I'll be done. And, um, I kind of noticed that in the same picture in the lower left, I didn't know there was a drive-through to the apartments for that car there. Thank you. That's it.
Well, I think if you go too low on the pitch, you can't use shingles, right? So then it's an ugly mop roof or something.
Yeah, there's definitely considerations in the roof pitch, but that's, you know, and how it's constructed. So the, the, that's why it, you know, it just needs another, another look, then, you know, continuing look at the roof, I'd say.
All right. Any other public comment? I don't see any. One thing, um, before we move on with this. Peter, you mentioned that there was, there've been some complaints about dust coming off the site. You want to talk about that?
Just one thing I just wanted to kind of bring up in the meeting into the applicant. I did send the email over, but just with the summer season that's coming up, last summer, there was a lot of dust coming off of the site. So I just kind of want to make sure that the applicant's aware that dust is going to be looked at, I would say by the town. And we just want to make sure that the applicant is, is, is aware and, and, and it, it is your responsibility to control your site. You know, even though this has been a, a longer process than everyone has anticipated. You know, we are going back into that summer season when dry, you know, the site would, could be, you know, dry some days and dusty and, and, and therefore I just don't want to get back into that same, have those same conversations as I did between the butters and, and then yourself, the applicant and, and the owner, as I did do last summer. So I just kind of wanted to make a public statement that the town will be kind of watching out and, and and we would expect cooperation from the owner and the applicant of the site to make sure that the site is controlled in regards to dust.
Yeah, um, Bill has been working out of the area, but he can, he can meet with folks. But I guess to some extent, the quicker we can get through this project, the quicker we can get everything cleaned up.
I understand that. And I think, and, and, you know, I think, I think you received some great feedback tonight, Peter. And I think, you know, taking this meeting as a, is a, is a very, is a positive step forward. I want to thank the planning board members again for having a meeting on a Tuesday night and, and, and reiterate what Mark just already said, a member of the, the public that he's seen great communication between, you know, the applicant and the planning board. And, uh, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to end the meeting on a sour note, but I just kind of want to, to make sure that everyone is aware that the site needs to be. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to end the meeting on a sour note, but I just kind of want to to make sure that everyone is aware that the site needs to be controlled this summer. Um, and obviously, I would love to get through the process, uh, probably, you know, just as, you know, much as you and Bill would, Peter. So uh, I I just kind of want to put that out there for every, I, so everyone is on the same page regarding the site and site control.
All right, then I think we're probably ready to uh, continue this. Uh, until our Thursday, May twenty eighth meeting. Do I have that date correct?
That the next meeting?
That is the next meeting. It's a week from Thursday. Is it? Peter, do you know what else we have on the calendar for that date?
Uh, we're just gonna have the continuation of five Homer Street. From the last meeting.
So should we do this at seven forty five?
I would say seven, yeah, seven forty five.
Let's, let's do this at eight.
Okay.
And I've got another thing to talk about that I think we'll put at seven forty five.
Okay, that's no problem.
Be relatively short. Okay.
Of course, so so that's fine. I mean, that's your next meeting. Uh, Peter, can can we sit down? Uh, once we get you the the drainage stuff and and get the consultant and can we sit down next week? To kind of see where we are, get some of the issues, hopefully we'll have some chance to look at the comments that came up tonight. Um, I understand you got the election, so I don't. There's not a lot of time to get all this stuff done. If we can sit next week, uh, with a Zoom meeting or something like that and. Iron out some conditions and whatever else we think is necessary, that may, that would be helpful to try to get us to the finish line.
Yeah, Peter, I'm more than happy and I think we can communicate offline about, you know, set out a meeting to, you know, tomorrow. Uh, we won't be sitting down. We'll be having a Zoom meeting. I hate to break it to you, but uh, but yeah, you and I can communicate offline, please.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, real quick, uh, are we gonna have any feedback from design review by then or not?
They're meeting with design review this week, so while they might not have the final design review report, uh, report by then.
They'll have a lot.
Will at least have their initial reactions.
Okay.
So that said, I'll entertain a motion uh, to continue uh, this uh, public hearing and public discussion. Until eight o'clock on uh, Thursday, the twenty eighth.
So moved Dale Buchanan.
Seconded. Phil Williams.
All right, uh, we'll do a roll call vote.
Aye, Dale Buchanan.
Mr. Kendall, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Joe Riverton, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye. That's five zero and this is continued.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, just a couple of other scheduling things. Uh, I've been talking uh, to uh, several people who are working on a uh, tree bylaw for Ashland. And uh, this would be implemented uh, most likely as a zoning article. Hopefully for fall town meeting. And they would like to uh, share with the planning board uh, where they are on this and uh. I would like to do that on the agenda at our next meeting at seven forty five. Normally, I just email Peter and say, put it on the agenda. Uh, but since I have everyone here, I thought I could at least uh, let people know um, to expect it.
I'm good with it.
So, uh, the only other thing, uh, that since, since we have it, um. I'd also like to have a a discussion on our Metro West Regional Collaborative Representative. So that uh, people can be thinking about uh, who should do that uh, going forward uh, after June. So if if that can get on the agenda also, Peter, that would be great. Uh, that doesn't need a time slot. We can just do that whenever it's.
I'll just put that administrative item.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, Preston, sorry, I don't, I don't know what that is.
That's why I'm going to bring it up and discuss it.
Trish, uh, just briefly, um. Ashland is a member of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. Uh, Preston, uh, there's there's seven, there's, I believe there's. Seven subregions within the hundred and one cities and towns that surround Boston. Ashland is in the Metro West uh, collaborative, which is our quote unquote subregion. Uh, Preston currently is the uh. Is a planning board representative to that subregion. Uh, and that is what Preston was speaking about, the membership to that subregion.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I'll go into more details so that people can think about, you know, what's appropriate. And uh, you can make that decision uh, after the election. Right, I just wanted to get people thinking about it, uh, so we have uh, some continuity going forward. So, uh, is there anything else uh, we need to cover tonight? Does anyone else uh, have anything they need to say?
I I have, I have something that I'd like to, I'd like to raise with the group and I I'm not sure how far in depth we can go. As not on the agenda, but um. Looking at how um, looking at as one twenty eight main comes together. I I wanted to discuss what I see are as perceived differences between some of the finishing. On that building versus the final rendering and approved. Uh, what I thought were, you know, final approved plans for that building. Um, I. There's these black panels that are on that building that are absolutely nowhere in any of the drawings we ever saw, looked at or approved. And that building went through design review committee. And there was a a lot of that was incorporated in that and I just. I I'm trying to, as I look at it coming together, I'm just trying to get a sense of what's going on and how how. How some of these changes have occurred, so. I'm not sure if we can discuss this, Preston, or if this is the right time, but.
I think we should put that on the agenda. And uh, bring in some photos, uh, and uh, get the final renderings and.
I mean, I have them here. I could put them up on the screen. It's really easy.
I I think it should be on the agenda before we go into to too much detail on it.
I mean, there's no, uh, okay, but I mean, there's no matter before us on this topic.
Yeah, but I. It it feels better if we put it on the agenda.
I agree.
I I don't want to, I I don't want to push any open meeting rules, but I'm not sure.
And at a regular meeting.
Yeah.
Rather than a merge.
Is it appropriate then between now and the meeting to give the. Another developer on on that project a heads up that that's gonna be discussed and that we may have some questions?
That would be a good idea.
I mean, he could be, he or she, I was, he or she, I don't know who that is, can be, could be present.
Or at least provide comments.
Right, comment.
It's a good idea.
Uh, yeah, Joe, I can, I, you know, you can brief me on the topic and I can reach out to the uh, to the to the applicant and the developer.
Sure, okay. That works. Um, I I thank you guys. I appreciate the time.
And Joe, thank you for staying on top of things like this. This is very important.
Gonna have to get you a badge.
All right, um, if there's uh, nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn this meeting at eight twenty seven P M.
Uh, that was uh, moved and second uh, by Dale and seconded by Phil. Roll call.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Mr. Kendall, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Joe Riverton, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye. Uh, thank you for joining us and good night.
Thank you so much, everybody.
See you next week.